Let's call our meeting to order and get started this morning. Commissioner O'Donnell won't be with us, so we'll just go right ahead. And Commissioners, anything you need to say before we ask the manager? Okay? All right, Mr. Manager.
Commissioners, we have two items we're going to talk to you today about. First one, we're going to talk about SKED. And Steve Wilkinson is here, the new Executive Director.
Yes, thank you.
And second, we're going to talk about calendars for BOCC meetings for the, through the end of the, through the end of the year. Just to make sure we do a good calendar sync to make sure everybody understands and we'll make some decisions on if we're going to do some or not, but I think that would be a good thing to do right now. First, we'll just go ahead and let, we'll go ahead and do SKED first.
Great, thank you very much.
So there's a lot of acronyms in Kansas, so SKED, I noticed.
Military, so.
There you go. So, that's one thing I've learned when I've moved here. There's a lot of acronyms, just like the military. So, I think, I really thank each of you for your time today. I look forward to this opportunity to present SKED. First of all, I'm going to introduce myself, the senior management team. I'll share a little bit about SKED, which might be a refresher for many of you here. I will present three of our programs that we use to generate economic improvements, enhancement, and quality of life here in Sedgwick County. I'm going to be focusing principally on our SBA lending programs, which are a unique tool that we use to create jobs and business opportunities here in Sedgwick County. And lastly, we'll be looking at the activities that we have used here in Sedgwick County to achieve economic enhancement and quality of life. So first, my name is Steve Wilkinson, and I am the new Executive Director. I have had the pleasure of moving here very recently from Seattle, Washington. If you're familiar with that, I'm actually from a college town called Billingham, Washington. I have been in banking for about 25 years as a commercial banker. This is my first experience with a nonprofit. I am used to being called up on the phone asking for sponsorships and funds, so this is a new role for me. This is Daniel. He is my Chief Financial Officer, and he will also be my PowerPoint clicker this morning. We have Christie. She is our Loan Program Manager, and is well-respected within the community. Then we have Jody, who is our Housing Program Manager, and again, is probably one of the greatest experts that we have in that economic generator here in South Central Kansas. So Daniel, if you could help me out. By the way, if you would like, I know we have it on a PowerPoint for you, but we also have hard copies, if you'd like, either to follow now or after. So if you want a hard copy, just raise your hand, or Will can have them available to you afterwards. Okay, Daniel. So let's start on the first slide there, if we could.
Yep.
That shows the logo of SKED. Thank you very much. So as I indicated, SKED, our mission is to enhance and improve the economic vitality, community, I'm going to have to use my glasses, community infrastructure and housing quality within our region. SKED was formed in 1972 by executive order of Governor Bob Docking, bringing together local communities and to advocate economic growth in South Central Kansas. We work to improve the life, the quality of life, and to serve those who live and work within our 14-county region. Sedgwick is the largest county in our 14-county region and the most prominent commercial driver of prosperity and well-being in South Central Kansas. How is SKED improving and enhancing in the economic vitality of Sedgwick County? Three economic generators programs that we use: community infrastructure, housing, and lending. These three established economic generators are administering the repair, replacement, and renovation of existing community infrastructure; the repair, the renovation, weatherization of low-to-moder income housing neighborhoods, and providing effective financial solutions to local entrepreneurs and small businesses. SKED works with cities and counties that are unable to secure sufficient established financial revenue streams, to help them acquire alternative funds to repair and rehabilitate community infrastructure. This repair and rehabilitation includes streets, sidewalks, water and sewer lines, water and wastewater, I'm sorry, wastewater treatment plants, water towers, public hospitals, health centers, and even fire stations. I was reading, I've read a lot of reports since I've got here, a lot of community studies, including Sedgwick County, and there was a great study that was put out by the Hugo Wall School of Public Affairs. It's called "Citizen Engagement in Strategic Investment Decisions." This study was concluded in 2014, and I thought this was an interesting fact. They said the vast majority, 89.5 percent, of citizens feel that the local government should use public resources to fund community and infrastructure improvements that attract businesses. I thought that was very interesting, that the citizens of Sedgwick County understand and recognize the importance of infrastructure. Housing. Partnering with cities and counties, SKED collaborates to attain alternative sources of funds to rehabilitate and stabilize community neighborhoods. There was another great study or report that came out, and this was actually with Sedgwick County, and in it, it states, "People feel safe and enjoy affordable housing choices in diverse vibrant neighborhoods offering unique quality environments." So SKED helps municipalities apply for and administrate housing grants to weatherize, repair, and rehabilitate low-to-moder income households. Plus, we help apply for funds for neighborhood infill and to eradicate slum and blight. Lending. This is a very important and unique tool that we use. This is what is distinct about SKED as an economic development organization. SKED utilizes a toolbox of loan programs to fund entrepreneurs, startups, and existing companies. SKED works together with the Small Business Administration, I'll just be saying SBA, and private sector lenders to provide businesses with financial solutions and strategies to start up, expand, grow, and seize new commercial opportunities. I thank Sedgwick County for its investment. Those investments, SKED has directly invested into county projects to repair, renovate, and improve community infrastructure, invested in low-to-moder income neighborhoods, enhancing the quality of life for both county residents and businesses. Most notably, your funds invested in SKED have supported SKED's unique lending programs to finance the impending gap between conventional financing and the capacity for entrepreneurs and startups and existing companies to create jobs. Working together with the SBA and private sector lenders, SKED has provided essential financing to support successful entrepreneurs, startups, and existing companies to sell creative new products, deliver innovative services, and expand operations. The first program I'll be sharing about is the SBA 504 Loan Program. SKED is a certified development company, we call them CDCs here, and it was approved in 1972 by the SBA to provide SBA 504 loans within our 14-county region. The SBA 504 program is a unique financing tool. It's utilized specifically for the purchase, construction of commercial real estate, and equipment for small businesses. This product has enjoyed great success in 25 years and provides many small businesses that want the opportunity to own their own commercial investments and secure their futures. The SBA 7A Loan Program is the SBA's primary program, offering preferable repayment terms, multiple loan options, making them ideal for entrepreneurs, startups, and existing companies. Now, the SBA does not make this loan, but guarantees the loan. And being self-employed or a professional, like a lawyer, an accountant, or a dentist, it can be very difficult to obtain conventional financing for their practices. Typically, there's little collateral available to secure this conventional loan. So the SBA 7A Loan Guarantee can mitigate that and many other risks that bankers are feeling uncomfortable with. So the SBA Loan Guarantee assures the lender that if the borrower defaults, the federal government will reimburse the lender. The third and final one I want to speak on is the SBA Micro Loan Program. It provides small businesses with small, short-term loans for working capital, purchase of inventory, supplies, furniture, fixtures, and other equipment. The SBA has authorized SKED to originate loans up to a maximum of $50,000, and it's a great program for small businesses which have modest credit needs and do not qualify for traditional credit sources. So accomplishments in Sedgwick County. From 2014 to 2017, year-to-date, SKED has administered community infrastructure projects in Sedgwick County, totally 3.7 million. From 2014 to 2017, year-to-date, SKED has administered the weatherization of 515 homes in Sedgwick County. The construction cost of $2.4 million is comprised of weatherization materials purchased and the hiring of local construction contractors in Sedgwick County. On the lending side, we have created or retained 332 jobs in Sedgwick County, and we have funded 54 businesses in Sedgwick County. Our vision is to provide essential programs that enhance the quality of life for the residents and businesses in our communities throughout South Central Kansas. Thank you. Floor is open.
Okay, you're ready for questions?
I am ready for questions. Thanks, Steve.
Commissioners, do you have any? How many counties are involved in SKED?
14.
14-county area?
Yes.
And your funding that you get for the operation comes from assessments to those 14 counties?
Correct, yes. We were looking at that, and I was looking at the budget, my three weeks here, and Sedgwick County really is the powerhouse and is the hub of the counties. Sedgwick County has been an important contributor to the operations. About 13 percent of our revenue, or unrestricted revenue, comes from county dues. And of those county dues, Sedgwick County has invested about 50 percent of that.
Okay. And do you also have community memberships, or is it just county memberships?
Well, we have county board members. However, we do have representatives from those communities as well on our board. We have a very diverse board, as you can imagine, from all the communities that have many voices and many needs.
Okay. And, well, I don't know, any other, anybody else have?
Well, I'm fairly new to this, so I'm still learning. I appreciate all the information you've given us so far, but you have documents here that show that you've got about $6 million worth of investments-
Yes.
...in Sedgwick County.
Yes.
But what you didn't tell me is how much we are investing back to get that $6 million.
Okay, I apologize, I assumed there were. So, previous, I'm just going to say, prior fiscal year, I believe it was about $60,000, and you've invested in SKED. And that might have been one or two years. Is that correct?
One year, one year.
One year, for the one year, but for the prior year, was it?
A little bit higher.
A little bit higher prior, but it was $60,000 last year.
Okay, and where do you get the rest of it? That's a long way.
Oh, that's a very good, yeah. So, about 33 percent comes from administering grants that we help cities write and we administer. The other, about 30 percent as well, 33 percent, comes from our SBA loan programs. We get a fee, we service them as well. So we, that is an area that we hope to expand. Being a banker, former banker, working with a lot of businesses, I think it's important that we look at how we can increase our revenue stream and lessening the funds that we receive from the counties. That's a direction, that's a vision I have, I hope to move in.
And where, you've got, created or retained 332 jobs.
Yeah, that's a number that we have to report, because many of our loan programs that we have, in order to provide those funds, we have to list or report, prove, verify that it will create jobs. For some programs, it's for every $65,000 that the SBA lends, one job. Manufacturing, I believe, it's about for every $100,000, you have to create one job. So as a part of the package when you present it, you have to, with the borrower, with the company, show how this will have an impact, creating jobs.
Do you come back with us reports periodically, other than this, to show what kind of jobs and so forth?
I can anytime you ask, yeah. Yeah. I don't know in the past, but I can tell you, if you'd like in the future, we'd be glad to, yeah. I think it's important, as in, you're investing in us. We're accountable to you. We're the ward of those funds. We have to be responsible, we have to be efficient, proficient, we have to look at how we can improve our services. We're committed to providing the service, but we have to constantly look at that, and part of that is just talking to yourselves and other county commissioners and others in the community. Are we meeting your needs? How can we better meet your needs? What more do you need from us? As a former banker, a lot of it was, we might not have what you need, but we have connections. We have connections with the Greater Rich Top Partnership, SCORE, WEBA, other great organizations. How can we come together to help you? I did a lot of, worked with a lot of export companies, because I'm from Seattle, so I worked with the U.S. Import/Export Bank a lot. I use the 504 programs, because in Seattle, we have a lot of growth, and there's a lot of risk. And as a banker, you're trying to mitigate that risk, and so we use the 504 program extensively up north.
And the counties representative, Shirdell's been our-
Yeah, Shirdell has been an excellent board member. He has helped when we had an absence of leadership here. Shirdell stepped up. Other board members really stepped up and helped lead us during that time.
And your chair presently?
Is Ron Hurst. He's a Reno County Commissioner.
Commissioner, yeah.
And he has that, I found out, it's this Kansas directness.
That's good.
Yeah, I like it very much. In Seattle, we kind of go around a little bit together. Yeah. A little different.
Okay, any other questions, Commissioners? Or anything, staff have questions at the? Well, we appreciate your presentation.
My pleasure, thank you very much. And if you do want any updates, although this is an annual, we can make it quarterly, I'd be glad to. I think it's important that you maintain a strong relationship, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
And one more, our financial involvement is just a year at a time, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, so, we're making our budget now, and?
Yes.
All right. I got it.
Thank you.
All right, next, Jessica will lead us through the calendar sync.
Good morning. At your seats, you should have found calendars from now until end of the year. July's dates are already pretty well set due to the budget calendar. We'll have meetings July 5th, 12th, 19th, and then the evening of Monday, the 31st, at 6 o'clock, will be the second nighttime budget hearing. The first budget hearing will be part of your agenda on the 19th. So that takes care of July. August, the first meeting will be August 2nd. There'll be budget adoption. We do have five Wednesdays in the month of August this year, so we could have up to four meetings if you so choose. Commissioners, what's your will?
The budget adoption is on?
August 2nd, the first Wednesday.
I see, okay. And we have, since I've been here, we've just traditionally taken off the next BOCC meeting, kind of give everybody a break from the pressure of budget. Is that the recommendation this time?
Correct. To delete the 9th, Wednesday, the 9th, meeting. And that still gives us three for the month of August.
Okay, so then we come back for the 16th and the 23rd?
Correct.
All right. And the other question I had about-
Is that agreeable, Commissioners? Okay.
I'm sure I heard you correctly, the 9th is the day we're thinking about not having a meeting.
The other question I had was, August 1st is a Tuesday. It is also the primary election day. Do you want to hold a staff meeting that day? Sometimes Commissioners, I know, are very involved in the elections. Also, staff as well.
You're talking the 8th?
No, August 1st.
Oh, oh. We could, on a primary election day, I guess we could tentatively say that we will not have one if it seems that something's coming up we need it, running into a budget adoption, well then we'll just call a meeting.
Okay.
Is that, is that same reason, or would you like to have a meeting?
Well, I'm more concerned about the 8th. I may take some time off after the budget meeting. So, I mean, I'm fine. But the 1st, I don't really care, I'm probably taking off, taking off there.
Well, if we don't have a BOCC meeting on the 9th, then likely we wouldn't have a staff meeting on the 8th. But let's just leave first as a tentative, maybe, maybe not.
Okay. And then how do you want to handle the 8th?
And as we, as we roll up to it, we can make that decision.
Make your recommendation on it.
And then cancel the 8th.
Pardon me?
Cancel the 8th.
But I think the 8th, at this time, I don't know that we would need a meeting if we don't have a staff meeting or a BOCC meeting the next day.
Okay.
So we're deleting the 8th?
Yeah.
So, there'd be no meetings the 8th or the 9th?
Yeah, and some, you know, as Commissioner Randtall said, some people anticipate not being here on the 9th, so they take off that whole week, so.
Sure. All right. Any other changes to August? No, not hearing any. In September, we're back to four Wednesdays in September. The September 20th, however, overlaps with the city to sender, I apologize, city-to-city travel, which I believe two Commissioners are attending. So, we would not have a quorum to hold that meeting.
So we will not hold that meeting?
Right.
Same thing for staff meetings?
Right. So that would leave possibly two meetings that month?
Well, I don't know what, what might evolve, and you know, we're looking right ways down the calendar, but if it appears that we need another meeting on the 27th, we can call that. We can set it for now, the last meeting of the month we wouldn't need, but if we need it, we'll call it. See, I'm not sure, but I think I don't want a meeting on the 27th. I have to go look, but I don't think I want one. I forgot my calendar.
That's all right, we've got plenty of time between now and then. October, I don't know of any conflicts for Commission meetings. They'd be the 4th, 11th, and the 18th, with no meeting on the 25th. November, again, we have five Wednesdays in the month of November this year. Having said that, the third week of November, the 14th, 15th, and 16th, is the KAC Conference in Kansas City, which I believe Commissioners have been invited to. I don't, I'm assuming at least a few of you are going, is that correct?
Well, I don't know how many are going. I think two or three probably go to KAC. Do you plan on going to KAC?
Okay.
Pardon me? Everybody but one's going, okay.
Okay, so, no meeting on the 15th then?
And a staff meeting too, right?
And no staff meeting. And then my other question is, would you want to have a Commission meeting the Wednesday before Thanksgiving?
See, we did not, last year, I don't think, did we? Have one before, the day before Thanksgiving?
To be honest, I don't remember, sir.
May I have one before Thanksgiving?
No. There is potential, we could have one on the 29th, because we would be missing two Wednesdays in a row? If that would be a possibility for you all?
Well, for planning purposes, Commissioners, do you want to take off 15th and the 22nd, and maybe plan on one, tentatively on the 29th?
Maybe a good idea, sometimes that.
Okay, I think I get a general.
Well, I gotta look at the hunting schedule. Either the 29th or the 6th is opening the deer season. I don't know which.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll try to get four here.
Put a question mark by it.
But right now, we're, we're planning on BOCC on the 29th.
Okay, so in November, we'll have meetings on the 1st, 8th, and 29th.
Right.
All right. And then that brings us to December. Regular four Wednesday month, we would have meetings the 6th, 13th, and the 20th, unless you all know of any changes that need to happen.
Okay. If there's any conflict with that, so.
All right. Thank you all for your time.
Are you going to update this and then?
Yes, sir.
Email it to us?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it. Other than, after this meeting, my staff meeting is canceled, because we have to work on EMS agreement, so.
Okay.
But other than that, we're good.
Okay. Now, we, it was just brought up a little bit ago that we are supposed to go see the salt mines storage tomorrow. That we all, is a general consensus that that gets rescheduled?
Sorry, I believe that's scheduled for Friday.
Oh, really?
It's on my calendar tomorrow. I've got it shown at 9:30 tomorrow morning, and my worry is getting back by time for a 1 o'clock on-ball.
I have it down on my calendars Thursday, or tomorrow.
Well, we'll, we'll find out what the true story is.
Okay, well, I'm concerned, like David, that that's really going to jam us up, and if we have last-minute conversations, we, if it is tomorrow, I'm thinking we need to reschedule it.
We'll find out, and we'll let you know.
Sir, I have it on my calendar, the manager's calendar, is Friday, the 28th of July. I'll confirm with UBS what the plan is and let you know.
The 28th of July?
Correct.
Oh, Calhoun, well, maybe one month off.
That's okay. Let me confirm, and I will email everybody.
Okay. That's a good idea. All right, we all are going to find out what day it is, but if it is tomorrow, we've got to, we've got to reload on that, okay? Commissioners, Jim, you have anything you want to bring up? Richard?
I'm trying, but.
Good try?
I failed again, sorry.
Okay, then, how about around this table? Anybody want to bring up anything? All right, how about our elected folks in the, sitting over here watching the poll? Hey, how come you let the population get over 1,500 the other day, yesterday? I mean, that's, that's starting, you know, that's starting to be a question.
Respectfully, sir, I would suggest that Sheriff Easter answers that question. If he's out of state, we will never know today.
Well, but seriously, I mean, I've been watching, and you know, a year ago, we were consistently under 1,400, now all of a sudden we're 1,500. Our out-of-county numbers seem to stand pretty consistent, but that's a huge budget impact if that changes.
Yeah, and we, we monitor it closely, as a matter of fact, our CFO and I talk about this frequently, the big thing is purely the number of arrests that are occurring on the streets in White House. We just have unusually a large amount of arrests, and of course, this is the seasonal time of the year when we start expecting arrests to come up, but you know, our population never went down at the end of the year like normally it continues to go. And in fact, there was an interesting article that I just saw today that came out of the DOC that they're transferring a lot of their mental health inmates from other facilities to the illiterate, and so it was guarding someone who were prone to, you know, directly impact, as a change in time, what's happening, I think, incarceration is so closely, looking like ourselves, where the state populations are going up.
And, and one issue is, we're having trouble finding out-of-county placements because they're short-staffed in our adjacent counties, and, I mean, this has kind of got a snowball effect here that?
It is, you know, about five years ago, we took a really hard look at where we were housing inmates at, and we reduced our contractual counties that we did business with. We went down from 19 to basically five, brought in immediately to any surrounding counties. And because of their staffing shortages, we're stretched back out again, and I think we're, we're back out to about nine. And we're, that 60, 75 mile circle we had from our core area right here, it's, it's getting increased dramatically, just because of best days.
All right, well, I mean, we've stated a problem, we haven't stated any solutions, but?
Yes, and, and the big thing is, is of course, as we talk about on a regular basis, the Pacific County Adult Retention Facility is, is just a market, a larger puzzle, because we don't have the opportunity to refuse people at the back door, we have to take whatever is delivered to us, and of course, we also don't have the opportunity to release people that's done by the courts, so we're kind of stuck in playing two sets of doors.
All right, well, if there are suggestions or solutions, I suppose they'll come to us through Criminal Justice Committee Council.
Bring that into everyone's attention, sir.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Clerk? Huh? You got nothing? Madam Treasurer?
We're just, we're gonna send out the link with bills.
You're getting ready to, or you just did?
We're getting ready to.
Okay. Are you gonna get one?
I hope not.
Madam Registered Eats? All right, well, I think then, anyone else? I think we must all be good, so we'll adjourn while we're ahead.
Do you want to meet in my boardroom?
Sure.